I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. This is a study session of the Prescott City Council. Clerk, you want to call or roll?
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protemore.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good. Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Shoal.
Yeah.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We have a robust training agenda here, it looks like. So, City Manager, you want to kick us off?
Sure. Mayor, um, let me get my microphone all ready. We were going to do like a general training with new council. I was going to talk a little bit about the council manager form of government. John was going to talk a little bit about workplace harassment and hostile work environment, and then go into the open meetings and public records.
Sounds great.
Does it really? Does it sound great?
(laughing). What do you want me to say?
I like what you're saying, but, um, all kidding aside, basically the way I formatted this is I put together some, what I guess we'll call frequently asked questions about our form of government. And, um, most of you guys are well aware of all this, but obviously with three new council members, it's good to go over and kind of spend just a few minutes touching on it and talking about it. And I also think it's a good education opportunity for the public to understand our government a little better. In fact, Alexa had mentioned something to me earlier today about we don't really do a great job of educating young people about their local government. And as we proceed in calendar year 18, maybe we need to open this up to some opportunities for people that are in, uh, young people in school to learn about their local government. I can speak to my own experience. Growing up in Florida, we spent a lot of time on the state and the fed, but we spent no time on local government. And it's really the government you see and deal with on a daily basis, for better or worse. And a lot of people don't really know much about it, so. In any case, um, what is a council manager form of government? And the best way to describe it is it takes the advantages of elected leadership in the political environment, and it gives the opportunity to find a manager who hopefully is competent in the administration of a local government. So, it could be the best of both worlds. I think it is. I'm biased, obviously. But the, it takes one step of the political process away, which sometimes people feel like isn't as responsive, but I tend to disagree with that because in a lot of respects, my responsiveness in the organizations is tried on a daily basis because I serve at your pleasure. And, um, as one manager told me, it's important to learn how to count the four. So, um, in a lot of ways, the level of responsiveness is told by that kind of relationship that you guys set the policy and I implement it. And if I don't implement it properly, you find somebody that can. So, in a lot of ways, I think it's a very, very responsive form of government. And so, with that being the case, what's really the function of council? And in my mind, what council's function is to provide leadership and be the legislative body that gives the directives to the CEO of the organization. And your leadership and policy determination is on the broad macro things, like how the community grows, what we're going to look like 50 years from now, what we want to look like 50 years from now, what our strategic vision is, a lot of the things that we've set, and things like strategic planning, and how we're going to spend our capital. You know, we've had a lot of conversations the past couple of years about our capital improvement plan and having a better understanding when staff presents it about where we're going with this, what is downtown going to look like, what do we want it to look like? And then my function is to take the policies that you've made and make them a reality and implement them. And I think in a lot of ways, the other part of my responsibility is to be responsive to not only you, but the responsive, as you as representatives of this community, the taxpayers as a representative of, this is a representative democracy, and you give me the direction based on what you're hearing from your constituency. So, those are basically some of the general ideas of what a council manager form of government is, and a little bit more specifics, if you can flip this over. One of the things I get a lot of questions about, and it's good for you guys to know, in a council manager form of government, is it appropriate for you guys to talk to people in the organization beyond me? Does everything have to be funneled through the manager, or is it okay to go directly to the department heads? And really, it depends on the level of trust and the relationship the manager has with his elected body. I feel like that we have a very positive relationship. I expect it to be positive with the new council members. I think if you want responsiveness, sometimes going directly to the department head makes more sense than going through me. If you see a pothole, call somebody in the Public Works Department, preferably the department head, and say, "You've seen this." The only thing I would ask, and I think most managers would ask the same thing, is there's got to be a common sense approach to this. If something's going to take a lot of time and a lot of money, then I probably need to know. And if it's going to take a tremendous amount of time and money, then the decision needs to be the body as a collective, not the individual council member.
I have a question. But at what point in time does the employee or the department head feel like he has to answer to two masters?
I would hope that, in a lot of respects, like Steve, here's a perfect example. You're driving in in the morning, you see a pothole. You call the Public Works Director, and you give me a heads up and say, "Mike, I told him this." If he, if what I, the feedback I got was Steve said I needed to drop everything I'm doing and doing that now, then I'd have to draw a line and say, "That's not the way this is supposed to work." I only use that as an example because you've never done that, so it's easy to do that. But if it's, "Hey, I saw a pothole." The department head says, "We're going to put it on the list, and we're going to get to it as we get to potholes," that's appropriate and reasonable. Are there going to be times when you guys maybe push the line, or I need to pull it back? Sure. But for a manager to funnel everything through him or her, this doesn't make any sense. It just adds an additional step that's really unnecessary. I want you to feel comfortable that you can have dialogues with the rest of the people in the organization. I think it helps build relationships. It's not an us versus them, it's we're all in this together type situation. Is it a perfect solution? Is it always going to work? No. But I think we can have dialogues collectively or individually when there is a rub to work through the rub.
Hey, Michael.
Yeah.
On that point, in my short stint so far, I've worked a lot with John Heine, for instance. And so, in that case, he's helping me with information about what's going on in the community. And so, he's really helping with talking points and all that kind of stuff. And so, I think, you know, differentiating too with priorities and, you know, kind of directing staff to do something, maybe a pothole would be appropriate as you get larger, to your point, probably not appropriate. But there's, there are functions of staff that support us, and I mean, obviously, Michelle, the admin, does a lot of that as well. But even John in outreach, you know, has really been helpful, and I work directly with him.
And it's funny, John and I had a conversation just the other day about if it's a legal issue, I mean, he doesn't work for me, but, you know, go to the city attorney. By going to the source, you're better off than adding in an unnecessary additional step. If, and I would trust my staff, if it becomes burdensome, or too much time, or they're chasing rabbits down rabbit holes, I'm going to have a conversation with you guys to rein that in. And I've been here a year, I haven't seen it. And I, that says a lot for you guys, that you have a respect for this form of government. But at the same time, if you want things to get done, go to the person that can fix it.
Yeah, Michael, I think that, from my standpoint, I think that we need perspective. And so, you know, I'm going to go to Tom Geis, or to Chief Black, or, you know, to give them my thoughts on an issue, or to get their thoughts on an issue, or both at the same time. I think where we need to draw the line is telling Chief Black.
What to do.
What to do.
Yep.
"I want you to go do this right now, and that's not filling a pothole."
Nope.
That's, you know, you know, "I want you to exercise your policy options the way I want you to do that."
There's a difference between a council member bringing awareness to a staff member versus directing a staff member. And awareness of a problem, awareness of a public perception on something is totally appropriate. Demanding X be done isn't, is the way I would best characterize it.
Good example. On the way here today, I called Public Sanitation and talked to Shannon, and just said, "Did you know, none of the recycled cans were picked up in North Prescott yesterday? I don't think I need to go to you for that."
You absolutely don't.
So, and she said, "Yes, we did. We had a new driver on. He missed that whole section, and we'll send him out later today." So, I think that's just important to know, the distinction of a demand opposed to a knowledge, "Did you know?"
That's exactly right, Steve. And then you immediately knew the reason then, so you could share it with the citizenry. Going to me, for me to go to Willie Black, for Willie to go to Shannon, you're adding a half a day of work and four people that have other things to be doing. It's just not realistic and reasonable under the circumstances.
Especially when we're dealing with the public.
Yeah.
They're expecting a pretty quick response.
Exactly.
And going through that process, they'll say, "People don't get back to me."
You're exactly right. And it's bureaucracy at that point, right? Does anybody have any other questions about the?
I would just say, I think there's, and I think Steve said this well, is that there's a difference between asking for information, giving some information, and directing. And certainly, I have a direct dial to Mark with information about finances and, but I certainly don't direct Mark.
No.
Unless the three of us are talking, and you say, you know, will you help Councilwoman or with something, and so.
Mayor Protemore, that's a perfect point. I mean, I think during the 4-4-3, there were a tremendous amount of financial questions I can't answer. The brain here that's been here since the dawn of time, he can answer a lot of those, and you going to him makes a lot of sense. Next question is, does the manager participate in the policy determination? And the answer is yes, to some extent. But it's important for a manager to understand that there are going to be decisions made at this dais that, at the end of the day, he may or may not agree with. But it's my job and the manager's job to implement that policy. And at some point, my personal preference for a policy takes a backseat to what you think is in the best interest of the community. I think it's important for a manager to understand that. Are all county manager forms of government, city manager forms of government the same? No. I mean, things are tweaked around the margin. You guys all serve at large. There's a lot of communities that have districts. There's some communities where the mayor, like here, runs as mayor. There's other places where you select a mayor from the body. So, the basic concept of the difference between who formulates the policy and who implements it the same, but there's minor differences about how the things are structured. Does this work only in certain kinds of cities? No. I mean, I've seen city manager form of governments from very small municipalities to very large municipalities. You see them in county governments. I think it's of the 199 communities that have more than 100,000 people, 119 of them have city manager form of governments. You see them in large jurisdictions like Kansas City and Phoenix. I think it was really established to take some of what around the turn of the century was political graft and bribery, and have somebody that was a professional manager who had an educational background and some expertise in running a government entity. That was the creation. There's good city manager form of governments, and there are bad ones. The relationship between a city manager and his elected body, I've seen it be excellent, and I've seen it be not so great. In an environment like we have here, I think it's a very viable way to do business, and I'm happy to be the manager for this community, so. That's it. Does anybody have anything else?
We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Well, Greg, you got to learn to look at the deal.
Oh, right. Yes, sorry.
I don't want to embarrass you on your first, I don't want to first deal out, but you know, there's a reason why we do this.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. That would be, Councilman Lamerson has the floor.
Oh, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Hey, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Nobody here denies that you're doing anything wrong. I haven't heard anybody up here say anything wrong about our staff, whether it's this council, or the last council, or the council before, or even the council before that. We have a good city staff. We have a good working relationship with our city staff.
You guys do.
We have a good city attorney. We understand our roles. We do. And council after council understands our role, understands your role, understands his or her role, whatever the case would be. So, I think City of Prescott's in good, in good, good health. I really do.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
All right.
Any other comments or questions for Michael? Okay? Mr. Palladini?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're going to, I'm going to just, since we have the PowerPoint, Melissa Fosik from Human Resources is here to assist or to do part of the presentation. First, what we're going to talk about is, this really should say, prevention of workplace harassment. We're not trying to teach you how to harass. But I, and I think, I think for the most part, what you're going to hear, you all know, and we're all familiar with, no matter what your background, your experience, it's particularly important to talk about this publicly in the environment we're in today. You know, and because I, you know, a lot of it, you know, what you see, I think, from workplace harassment, oftentimes it's people saying things that, you know, somebody's offended by, I think the, and when somebody's offended by it, it's reasonable, it's justified, but oftentimes, the person who says something may not even realize they're saying something offensive. So, and so, it's important just to kind of have an awareness of what this is about. It's a relatively brief presentation, and certainly, you know, feel free to ask questions as we go. So, what our topic today, we talk about, you know, the actual law, our policy, our state and federal laws, get into a little bit of the legal analysis, and then what our sort of HR process is. And just as a, as an aside, you know, this year, our HR department put together a training, and every city employee has gone through this training. And our plan is to do it every year. And I think as part of our new employee orientation, there'll also be an aspect of this training. So, there should be no excuse from any employee that they didn't get the training, because at one point or another, they're going to, they're going to be trained, and they're going to be trained, and they're going to be trained and trained again. And also, just to let you know, that this is kind of, we do this training for new council every two years, and we do this training every year for boards and commissions. This is part of the training that we do. So, I think we're pretty proactive in this area as part of our sort of newly elected, new appointee type training, as part of the open, of the public records, open meetings type law. So, what does our policy say? Well, we have a whole bunch. But basically, it's about respect, and it's about a positive and productive working environment. So, our policy promotes that, mandates that. If we get complaints about hostile work environment, whether it's, whether it's based on sexual harassment, whether it's based on something else, we take it seriously and we investigate. Depending on the type of complaint or the type of issue that's brought up, sometimes we'll bring in an outside investigator, probably an attorney who can independently look at the allegations, and sometimes they're very extensive. Sometimes, if they're fairly straightforward, we can do it internally. But what we're mandated to do by law is to investigate the complaint whenever it comes up. So, and again, we take it seriously, and if it's determined that the allegation is sustained, or there is an issue, we have, you know, when it comes to employees, for instance, we have all kinds of resources. We have all kinds of responses. Sometimes, it's a matter of simply retraining that employee. Sometimes, if it's really bad, you know, there's a disciplinary process we can go through, up to and including termination. So, part, you know, obviously, again, it's about trying to make, maintain a positive working environment for people, but it's also to reduce our liability and our exposure to lawsuits. That's obviously a critical thing, because that's taxpayer dollars involved. So, here's what the federal laws talks about. The harassment, particularly sexual harassment, which again, is in, is in the, in the news today, it's unwelcome conduct. So, what we train people is, you know, not only if, not only should you not say or do things that are unwelcome, but if you are the recipient, I don't want to use the word victim, because it sounds too dramatic, but if you're the recipient of that conduct or that speech, make sure you communicate to the person, that's, "I don't want to hear that. I don't want to do that. I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to be involved in that." Because it's important that the person, again, the person may or may not know, may just be kind of ignorant, for lack of a better term, and say something that's just, you know, unwanted, or just stupid. And so, a lot of times, the, the best kind of reaction to this kind of activity is the person who feels like they're being harassed reacts and responds right away, and tells the other person, "Don't say that." And oftentimes, that's all that's needed. So, and obviously, if it continues, if it goes on, we also obviously encourage employees to let somebody know, let your supervisor, let your director, let HR, let legal know, because we can't do anything about it unless we know about it. So, don't keep it a secret. And again, given the environment today, I suspect that there are going to be very few secrets if this happens in the future. So, be aware out there in the world that if you're doing this kind of stuff, it's probably not going to be kept secret much anymore, because I think there is this move to really bring it to the forefront. So, these are the kinds of things that can amount to a hostile work environment. Whoops, let me go back. So, these are sort of, you know, things that people say or do. You know, we try and obviously, you know, again, it's about being professional and being respectful to people you work with. What happens, the person who's the target, it creates, it affects their production, it affects their ability to do their job. And so, if you have a, if you have a person who is subject to harassment, that person's, you know, has probably a higher propensity to call in sick, whether it's to avoid the situation, or whether it's an actual stress-related illness, affects our productivity, you know, and again, when we all work for the taxpayers, and we're all paid for by the taxpayers, this takes away from that productivity. And so, obviously, it's important that we make sure we, we deal with it, and we prevent it as best we can. Like I said before, any, you know, the person who's doing the harassing, we have all range of tools to deal with that person, anything from training to termination and everything in between. Again, depending on the nature of the harassment, the, how frequent it might be, if you're a repeat offender, you know, we try and like to give people a chance to make a mistake. But, you know, if you make the mistake, and make it again, and make it again, and make it again, it's, pretty soon, you're, most likely, the employee will be out of the job. So, this is, the, go back. This, let me go back to here. This type of harassment, hostile work environment, is the most common kind, at least in the normal world, the typical employment environment. This type of harassment is your Hollywood harassment. Person in power uses, for the most part, uses sex as a, as a power tool to get somebody to do something with the promise to, you know, that you'll get this job or get that job. This is relatively rare, but, you know, and again, in my experience, you rarely see this kind of thing. But, again, in Hollywood and Washington DC, this is the kind of, this is the kind of thing you're hearing about, this quid pro quo. It's oftentimes, "Do this, and I'll do this for you." Quid pro quo, this for that. This is, this kind of sexual harassment, or hostile work environment, or this kind of sexual harassment probably would result, again, due process is involved, but most likely would result in some, some form of really serious discipline, probably termination if it were sustained. So, this is much more serious, but I think much more rare, at least in kind of your typical employment environment. So, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa from HR, if she can talk about kind of what our processes are here, unless you have any questions about what I just went over.
Thank you. So, Mayor and Council, let's talk through what happens if an employee comes to you, whether they have a complaint, or they're just passing along some information. So, what we recommend that you do is gather the facts, the who, the what, the when, the where. What I mean by that is, so who is the harasser? What actually occurred? When did this occur? Do they have specific dates? Where? Was this in the workplace? Was this outside the workplace at an event? It's also important to gather information as far as other witnesses that may have seen this. What's most important, though, is that you want to immediately react to this. So, gather the information, notify Human Resources, the city manager, and legal, so that we can determine the course of action and move on this quickly.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
There's been a number of occasions where complaints have been forwarded to me, and I've brought it to the appropriate staff member. My job isn't to be an investigator. My job isn't to go and do investigations and nosepicking and all that other stuff, okay? That's not my job.
Sure.
My job is to bring it to the appropriate staff member that's necessary, whether it be the city attorney, whether it be the city manager, whatever the case would be. But it's been to turn, turns things over. As a matter of fact, since I've sat on this council at least twice as the Mayor Protem, I've had to launch two Attorney's General Investigations. You know this, because you've been part of it. The fact of the matter is, is that it's not just about our staff, it's about our council. Okay? Council has to be very careful on how it conducts itself with regards to intimidation in, in, in workplace hostile environment type scenarios, to where the very people that are working for and on behalf of the council don't feel as though that not only are they intimidated, but retaliation, okay?
Absolutely.
And I think it's fair to share with the council that there are circumstances when management in the past, notice how I put that, in the past, has been very, very reticent in its responsibility to the council members with regards to, "I'll have your job if you don't do this, or if you don't do that." So, council members need to be aware also that, you know, we have a covenant with the voters of this community. We're here for a reason, all right? And it's to support the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona. It's not the mollycoddle, the bureaucracy, to get their way. Okay? I'm just sharing that with you. So, while we're having this conversation, it's a good time to bring it up.
And, and you know, the reason I say that is because the employee may be comfortable with you, maybe they have a relationship with you, and that's why it is not a requirement that you gather those facts. It's a recommendation that if they have that comfort with you, that you can pass that information along to us, and we can investigate that further. And if that's not something you're comfortable with, then absolutely, that's when you hand it over to us.
Exactly right.
Okay. In some of these cases, if an employee did come to you, that they have the opportunity to circumvent their chain of command, and that may be because the harasser is within their chain of command. And so, again, that's only if necessary. But what I would recommend that you do is make sure that you document your follow-through. So, if you do gather information, put that in an email, address it to HR, address it to legal or city manager, and pass that along with, to us, and that we will, we'll do our jobs from there. So, for managers and supervisors here at the city, and especially through the training that we provided, we inform them that we are, all the supervisors are in the eyes of the law. Like, we, they, what they do or don't do reflects on us as the employer, the City of Prescott. If they ignore harassment, the employer may be liable. If they don't handle it correctly, the employer may be liable. That's why we say, "Pick up the phone, give us a call, we'll talk through the situation." If they engage in harassment, there will be consequences for that, and they can be sued personally. So, that's why harassment is very serious, and we all must take it, our obligation as supervisors, very seriously. So, not only is harassment illegal, but the law also prohibits retaliation. So, if an employee were to complain to management about harassment, even if they are not the victim, or they participate or cooperate in investigation, it is illegal to retaliate against someone that manages that situation. So, our policy also prohibits employees from lying, pressuring others to lie, or covering up prohibited harassing conduct. And retaliation is just as serious as the actual harassment itself. There's basically two takeaways that I think are important to note. The first is that we all have the opportunity to lead by example. Everyone here has, helps set the tone and attitude for the city, and we want to set that bar high by creating a respectable culture here at the City of Prescott. And the second important thing is, don't fail to act. And what I mean by that is, if there's an issue, we need to address it. Oftentimes, when we hear of small issues... just by having a little bit of discussion and conversation, those issues will go away, they resolve itself. Without that discussion, they often fester into much larger issues that they didn't need to be in the first place. So, are there any questions that I can answer for you or Mr. Palladini? Thank you.
All right, so, just like the, you know, the, obviously, training you just got was certainly not intended to give you some, some level of expertise. It's really to sort of be aware of the issues. And, and if, you know, if those issues come up, if you suspect issues coming up, just like this training, we err on the side of caution when it comes to these kinds of issues. And again, we've got, we've got great staff, we have great volunteers, we have great volunteers who get on boards and commissions. Obviously, we have a great council and mayor. So, what we're trying to do is make sure that we protect everybody and protect the organization to keep, you know, to keep things moving forward. Because these kinds, those kinds of things can really affect, again, affect the productivity and affect moving forward because oftentimes, if it is a pervasive problem, it takes a lot of resources and it redirects a lot of focus on to, you know, solving, investigating and solving problems. So, that's why it's important that we, we talk about it. And certainly, like I said before, this, this training will be given to, in the spring, when we have our boards and commissioners appointed, they'll all get it. And in the past, we've made it mandatory for new appointees and voluntary for sort of people continuing on. But, we're going to try and make it as mandatory as possible for every board, commission member. We'll probably do two or three different sessions. This training, this open meeting training, as well as sexual harassment, just so everybody kind of gets up to speed on it because we think it's an important issue. So, what we're going to talk about today is, first of all, is open meeting law. Certainly, free to, feel free to ask questions as we go through this. And again, this is not to give you an expertise in this stuff. It's to make you aware of the issues and make you familiar with it. So, if you have questions, just like the prior training, you know, go to, go, come to me, go to HR if you have questions about this, if you think there's something going on and we'll certainly give you the best answer we can. So, open meeting law. What's the intent of open meeting law? Openness in government. A lot of states, Florida in one, calls it sunshine laws. Their public records and their, and their open meeting laws are to shine the light on government, so that things are done in public, before the public, so that the public can be involved. And things, things, even though things are done legitimately, they need to appear to be legitimate to build confidence in, the public's confidence in government decisions. Public's not going to always agree with the decisions you make, but at least there's a confidence level that you're doing it publicly and there aren't these backroom deals going on. What's a meeting? So, we're going to start off with some of the mechanics. Meeting is a gathering of a quorum. A quorum, in this case, is four. So, if you have a quorum of a public body and you're in a meeting, if you discuss city issues, if you propose outcomes or solutions or decisions or, or direction, if you deliberate, if you debate about issues, or if you take legal action, which basically means you're making a decision, that's a meeting. So, be, just be aware that when, when there are four of you talking about something and it has to do with city business, you're probably having a meeting. So, obviously, we want to do that in public, under an agenda, and only those things that are agendized. What happens, and this happened actually recently with one of our relatively new committees, we didn't have a quorum. With this, you know, it was kind of a short notice and we didn't have a quorum. We said, "Well, no meeting." And the committee members, obviously, were very excited about getting started. "Well, can't we just talk about some things?" It was like, "No, it's not a meeting, not a quorum, you got to cancel and start over." You know, and it's disappointing, I understand, particularly when, you know, we don't really see this problem, a quorum problem with councils. But, oftentimes, commissions and boards, just sometimes the scheduling doesn't work. But, actually, in, when we had our work, our study session with our airport consultant, we lost the quorum. We had three council members. We had to stop, can't have, can't go on. So, it happens. But, again, that's what your legal staff is for, to make sure that, you know, that we have a proper quorum situated. Notice and agenda, this is a clerk function. So, the clerk has to make sure that the notice and agenda and minute requirements are all done and consistent with state law. You know, we, and, and so, a lot of times, unless there is an emergency, a true emergency, you have to have 24-hour notice. Our charter requires that ordinances be published 48 hours in advance. It's why it's, it's difficult to get things onto an agenda last minute. So, that's why Maureen's deadline for doc, you know, for things from staff is usually like Wednesday, prior to her Tuesday meeting, so she can post the agenda and the materials online and in public by Thursday. So, we clearly meet those 24, 48-hour notice requirements. If, you know, and this will, a little bit, this will be really for next week, but our current policy is, the mayor or two council members can put something on an agenda, please don't come to us on Monday and say, "Hey, can we get this on the agenda tomorrow?" It's very difficult because that 24-hour notice is, you know, there's some processes that have to happen. Again, if it's a true emergency, that's a little different. Again, these are the exceptions. We did this once recently, again, for some of the carryover council folks. We had an executive session discussion, ran out of time, went back into the open session and then voted to continue the meeting till the next day. That's the one time you can kind of, you can continue a meeting or continue an item to the next day without having to formally agendize. And again, actual emergencies. So, if there were a public safety, you know, God forbid, some sort of fire, the council could meet on five minutes' notice if it had to. Hopefully, we don't have to do that in the future, but that is a tool available. Okay, who has to comply? Obviously, you all do. But, every subcommittee of the council would have to comply with open meeting law. Every advisory committee, boards, commissions, every public committee, mayor's ad hoc committee, everybody has to comply with open meeting law. That becomes your staff, particularly the clerk and the legal department, making sure that those committees, subcommittees, commissions, boards, ad hocks, you know, that they're properly noticed, properly agendized and that we keep those bodies to the topics on the agenda. Okay, what can you do or what must you do? You can meet and take legal action and legal action isn't lawsuits. It's making, voting on a decision that's considered a legal action or giving direction in a properly noticed and agendized meeting. We, we'll get to exec sessions in a minute. But, we don't, again, we don't have, we, we, we can't just talk about something that's not on the agenda. The exceptions, you know, there are these announcement opportunities. You know, oftentimes, the mayor or the manager will make an announcement. Those are simply giving information. We're not going to propose to do something. We're going to provide information to the council or to the public. Something's happening or this is an announcement. Okay, exec sessions. So, we don't do exec sessions, you know, this is my little power trip. You don't get to do exec sessions unless I say so. And that's what our charter says and that's what the state law says. There are seven reasons we can do exec sessions. Those four on the list are sort of the most common. There are other ones, but we don't need to get into those. Our process for exec session is, there's one of two ways. On any topic on an agenda, on any topic on an agenda during a regular meeting, the council can vote to go into exec session. We don't do it very often to get legal advice on the particular item that's in discussion. The other way that we, which is more common for Prescott is we schedule a meeting at least 24 hours in advance, we agendize that meeting, we start the meeting in an open session and then the mayor, if there's sometime, the meeting convenes. Sometimes, there's some, some public discussion. But, usually, what happens is the mayor then calls for a motion to go into executive session on the topics on the agenda. Motion, second vote, goes to an exec session, at which point, if there's any public in the room, they're excused and we have the closed session. So, that's our process for going into exec sessions. We don't ever start a meeting as an exec session. We always have to start as an open meeting, a public meeting, where, you know, again, the, the public could in theory attend. Oftentimes, it's pretty perfunctory. Once we go into exec session, then only these people can attend. So, a lot of cities used to get into trouble because they would have these executive sessions and oftentimes, you'll see in our regular voting sessions at 3 o'clock, you'll have a bunch of staff people here because they have one or two items on the agenda. And a lot of cities would get in trouble because every department head would go to the exec session. You know, and so, if you're talking about a real estate contract, there's really no reason for the police chief to be there. And so, cities would get into trouble because exec sessions are privileged and confidential and only those people necessary for that discussion can attend. So, we try and limit, so sometimes, when you go to exec session, you'll see three or four staff people. Sometimes, you'll see none. Sometimes, you'll see three or four staff people on item A and then they'll, they'll leave because item B has nothing to do with them. And so, that's how the process works with those people who can attend. Very important, what goes on in exec session stays in exec session, it's like Vegas. You know, you, you got to keep it, it's privileged, it's secret, it's confidential. Can't talk about it, keep it confidential. We don't vote in exec session, we don't take a poll. What the council can do is give direction, which generally, which isn't a decision, generally, the direction, let's say it's a lawsuit settlement or a contract deal. Go ahead and counteroffer with this price. So that, so that if there's an ongoing negotiation, go ahead and put it on an agenda. So, it goes on a voting agenda to make a final decision. Those are the kinds of direction that the council can give. We don't, again, we don't do polls, we don't, you know, all, if it's, yeah, go ahead and settle for that price or, or go ahead and make that offer to purchase and there's, there can be a consensus. We still have to bring that back to a public meeting to approve at a public meeting. So, all lawsuit settlements, other than what the manager and I have authority to settle, which is $25,000 or less, everything above that, and sometimes, some, some settlements below that, we'll bring, we'll bring to the council for a public approval, public debate, public discussion.
Hey, John, I think Councilman Lamerson has something.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify one more time as to how an executive session actually gets put on an agenda, okay? I think it's important for council to understand that not anybody can just say, "I want something on an exec session" and not everybody can just say, "I want an executive session." That isn't how this works. And with regards to the seven criteria for executive session, I think it's important that we drum home what that actually means.
Right, right, so I'll go back. The four, the four that we typically see are personnel matters. And those are personnel matters that generally deal with decisions or personnel responsive to you all, meaning primarily the three of us. Sometimes, it could deal with appoint, appointees, boards, commission members, those kinds of things. So, that, and those, there's, there's a little bit of quirk to that, that we have to give notice to the person you're talking about.
Can I interrupt right there?
Sure, sure.
So, when you're talking about appointees that are, that are direct relationship to the council, whether it be Board of Adjustments, whether it be P&amp;Z, whether it be whatever, when you want to discuss personnel matters, that goes into executive session, am I correct?
Generally speaking, it does.
Do they have to be present?
No. You, you, so what happens is you give that person 24-hour notice that we're going to talk about you in exec session. That person has the right to say, "No, no, 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 talk about me in public." And then you have to do it in public. Okay, that's what the, that's what the exec session statute talks about. Then you get to make the decision, do we want to deal, and, you know, do we want to talk about it in public? They asked for it to talk about in public, let's talk about it in public. And so, you talk about it in public. If they don't ask for it to be talked about in public, then you have the, the sort of right or authority to allow them to be in the room or not in the room during the exec session. The, the person, the personnel, the person you're talking about, doesn't have the right to demand to be in the room. That's your call as, as a council. So, for instance, when we get reviewed, we're in the room part of the time and then you say, and then oftentimes, "Hey, would you excuse yourself? We want to talk about you." Which is fine, I mean, you know, because you want to have, and the reason for that, I suspect, is you want to be able to have a frank discussion and sometimes, it's hard to talk about somebody when they're sitting there staring at you. It's easier to be kind of open and honest when they're not in the room. I mean, I, that's the normal, I think that's the reason that that statute exists the way it does. Discussion of confidential information is another thing we talk about. It may be records. Generally speaking, it's going to be records that are considered somehow confidential or privileged. You know, I'll give you, for instance, if the PSPRS board or local board is going to talk about somebody who's going to medically retire and they want to talk about his or her medical records, we, you know, that would probably, they'd probably go into an exec session. That's the best example I can give. There is some move, I will tell you, about confidential information and I don't know if it'll get any traction at the legislature to, to talk about security issues and sort of broaden that in terms, I don't want to call it national security, but security-type issues where you don't want to disclose your, sometimes, your security measures about something to the public. It's not currently allowed in, it's not currently allowed in the statute, but there's, given obviously, the, what's going to be going on in the world the last few years, there is, there's been discussion about whether that could be added in, almost like a classified military briefing. Obviously, we're not to that level, but that, but there are certain things like that. We don't do it that often. Obviously, legal advice is your primary one. And then, and, and just as a aside, I give, I'm giving you legal advice right now. We're not doing an exec session. I mean, so oftentimes, you know, or I'll ask, you'll ask from the dais, "Hey, what's the law on this?" So, you're not mandated to go in to exec session to get legal advice. Generally speaking, it's something to do with perhaps a settlement, a pending lawsuit, a business deal, real estate negotiation, those kinds of things. And oftentimes, that comes with, you know, the business transaction comes with some sort of legal advice. So, those are the kinds of things we go into. The other ones are dealing with Indian tribes, unions, and there's one other, which we never deal with. So, so that's why I put these four as your primary bases. Okay, so, again, legal advice, it's from your lawyer. I can't tell you how many times we've had other lawyers say, "I'm going to go into exec session with your counsel and tell them why they should settle this case." Like, it doesn't, doesn't work that way. You know, it's legal advice of your attorney. And, and it's, it's, again, primarily, it's me or my staff. Every once in a while, if we have outside counsel, you know, that, but again, it's the city's lawyers or city's attorneys that are allowed to give legal advice to you as a body. Okay, so, that's exec session. Any questions on that, comments? Okay, so, the rest of this kind of discussion is really not what to do, but what not to do. You know, in other words, we're trying to avoid open meeting law violations. So, here's a list, I'm not going to read it to you because we'll get into some of the details. But, here's sort of what not to do or what to do to, to avoid open meeting law violations. You know, and we'll, and we'll get into the details, but again, I think the most important takeaway is, if you have a question, ask before you do something, let us know. "Hey, here's what I'm thinking of doing, what do you think? What can I do?" Because there, you know, again, we're not saying there's ways to go, get around it, but I want to try and prevent rather than fix the problem. That's, that's our kind of, that's our, that's the best way to, to deal with these kinds of issues. So, polling, avoid, obviously, polling. You know, if you want to have a spirited discussion about your views on a particular item that's going to be on the agenda, just do it in here with the public. That's the point of all of it. Don't do it in, in your offices, don't do it, you know, at a bar. You know, do it in public, that's the whole point. Sure.
In my professional experience, a lot of times, we wanted to make sure that email communication was restricted to the recipient only and we always included a disclaimer at the bottom of that email stating that fact so that if someone did take that information and forwarded it, so that if someone did take that information and forwarded it, they were accepting the liability for it. Would that have an impact on this polling process when we're trying to say, don't send an email? If we, if we specifically say, this is for your eyes only, and then it's forwarded to someone else, creating an open meeting law violation?
The Councilman, Councilmember Good, I, you know, we have, like, if you see our, like, from the legal department, we have our attorney-client privilege disclaimer at the bottom. You know, the challenge, even if you were to attempt to put a disclaimer on that and the person, recipient, the other council member disregards it and forwards it's on, there is that sort of daisy chain or that string that creates the potential for an open meeting law violation. So again, if it's just a one, on one conversation, I would just say, be careful if you're one of those two people having that conversation, not to, not to, not to pass that on because, you know, it just keeps, it sort of waterfalls and it keeps going. The other thing I will tell you, and we'll get to, you know, public records, is you can put whatever disclaimer you want on your email. It's still a public record unless it's to me or my staff. Unless it's an attorney-client conversation, pretty much if you converse amongst yourself, it's all accessible to the public. And we'll get into public records in a bit. But, so the disclaimer doesn't necessarily help that much. And I'm, trust me, I'm not saying, don't use email. I'm encouraging you to use email, and here's why. And this is getting a little bit ahead of myself, is use your city email for city business because we retain those forever. We got these black boxes down in IT, and this stuff's retained forever. So we never have to worry about losing emails. You know, we never have, if somebody makes a request, whether it's in the context of public records, whether it's in the context of a lawsuit, we never have to worry about losing emails because they're always going to be retained. Even if you delete, delete, we still have those. We like that, we like to have those records. Because then again, it's part of the openness and part of the, part of the sunshine law. It's, we always were going to have it forever, or at least, you know, relatively forever on those. So electronic communications are actually preferred because paper gets lost, paper gets thrown away, and the originals sometimes aren't kept. But I would just say, when you're using email to communicate, just be careful. And we'll get into that a little bit down as we go through. Uh-oh, I pushed the down button, there we go. Okay. Again, this is, this is things just to be cautious about. That serial communication I talked about, kind of one-to-one-to-one-to-one, polling, you know, hub and spoke is, one person is used to kind of communicate to the other six. The best or worst example of hub and spoke was the school board in the Verdi Valley, I won't say which town, that there were three school board members out of seven sitting in a diner, talking about how they're going to vote. One leaves, the fourth comes in, they have the same conversation. You know, and so they were clearly attempting to hub and spoke and avoid having the discussion in public. It's not what we do here. We are very, very open and very cautious and very conservative about our approach to open meetings. Daisy chaining and serial, kind of a similar example, one-to-one-to-one-to-one. And the problem is it kind of tends to circle back to the first person. And all of a sudden, you're basically having this meeting. And remember, we talked about meetings, meetings don't have to be in person. They can be electronic, they don't have to be all the, you know, the conversation is all at the same time. It can, it can be over a time, but ultimately can turn into a meeting. So we're, again, we're extremely cautious about it. Two-way communication, so this is back and forth. Discussing, deliberating, taking legal action, basically proposing an outcome. Particularly if there's a quorum involved. And again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that two people can't have a conversation about a particular item coming up. But when you have that conversation, be really careful about going to the third person because that third person could have a conversation with you. And then go to a fourth person. And the mayor pro tem told the mayor, and the mayor tells Councilman Siskah, well, Mayor Pro Tem said this. And Siskah goes to Lamerson and says, well, the mayor said, or said that. And all of a sudden, you're polling. So that's, again, this is about being cautious about this, this kind of conversations.
Shows you don't know us very well.
Say again?
He might go to Blair, but he wouldn't come to me.
I was just using the names in front of me. Okay, so the more important thing, I think, is, and this usually happens in sort of an electronic format, on email, proposing legal action. If you're going to share information, let me go to this. So if you're going to share information to the rest of the council, Councilman so-and-so was made of hospital, or what's the next one? Here's a recipe for lemon bars. Or here's an article on the program State of Oregon has. Share that with the rest of the council, that's fine. I would caution you, though, to filter that or send that to, say, Michelle, and let her circulate it out. Because the, especially on the last, this last example, if somebody says, here's an article of a program Oregon put in place, and you send it to the rest of your fellow council, and one person says, I think we should do this. All of a sudden, now you've had a proposed legal action. So, you know, sharing information is fine, but it creates the potential of then a proposal for legal action. Let me go back to this. So we should install a crosswalk first in Maine. Obviously, given your city manager's presentation, that would probably interfere with administrative decision-making. That's not a policy, right? So you probably wouldn't even allowed to maybe make that public suggestion because ultimately, that's a public works, staff-level decision. But I think that you get the point is you're proposing some sort of decision that the council could make. Put it on an agenda, you know? Again, the mayor or two council people can put an item on the agenda. And sometimes you want to get it done right away. Sometimes it takes a couple of weeks before you can actually talk about it. But again, that's kind of our process. You know, certainly don't solicit voting. You know, we're not the Congress, they don't, you know. The irony, by the way, and I don't, I'm not trying to pick on Washington, far be it for me to do that. But one of the ironies of open meeting laws, the state legislature creates it, they're not bound by it. Okay, so there's a little bit of, I'll just say irony. And again, when you're, when you're sharing information, fine to share it, but don't propose, hey, this is a good idea, if you want to share information. But I would suggest use your staff to share that information. Give it to, you know, if it's a land use issue, go give it to Tom Geis, and Tom can share it. If it's something else, you know, use your management staff to go share that information. And that way, it's kind of kept, it's circulated properly, especially with you all. It go, you know, if it goes to the elected officials, the clerk gets it, the manager gets it, I get it. So we're able to then perhaps respond, you know, we get, you get comments from the public or a letter from the public. Sometimes, you know, I'll respond to that, hey, this, here's why we can't do that, or here's some legal issues with that idea, you know? And we can talk about that as we go forward. But again, on a properly agendized meeting.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So let's say we're looking to get something on the agenda, and we need another council person to help us get that on the agenda. How, what's your suggestion for going about doing that without polling?
I think you, because you're not looking for an outcome. You're looking simply to agendize the item. And so you simply ask a, another council person, hey, would you help me put this on the agenda? Or you go to the mayor and say, hey, mayor, can we, can you put this on an agenda? In the general practice, is when it talks about putting it on an agenda, it generally means a particular agenda, like the next agenda or the January 9th agenda. You know, it doesn't mean that the mayor can sit there and, no, I'll put it on in July because I don't like it. So that's the practice. So it gets on relatively quickly on an agenda. The only thing that would may hold that up, for instance, is, hey, we got 63 items on the next agenda. We're going to have to put it on the one following. Because sometimes it just becomes, you know, too much stuff. But yeah, what you're, what you're saying is, is I would like to discuss this item on a, on a study session, let's say it's a study session. Or I would, you know, because on a voting session, it's a little, there's usually something specific you want to vote on. So a lot of times, it's a study session item. I think we should have, I'd like to have Public Works present to us its road program for the next five years, you know? I think, first of all, you can talk to the manager and say, hey, how hard would it be to get them to do this presentation? You know, and then you could get put on an agenda, you can talk to the mayor, talk to the, all I want, I want to put it on the agenda, I don't have a particular outcome I'm seeking. You want to avoid that, you know? Going back to the example, we should install crosswalk at first in Maine versus, I'd like to talk about our sidewalk program. Or, you know, I'd like to put the question of a sidewalk at first in Maine on an agenda. You're not telling anybody how you want the outcome to be. You're just telling them, I want this on the topic. So that's kind of the recommended way of going about it. I like this one, by the way, the second bullet point down. That actually comes out of the AG's handbook, so I, you know. But again, the difference between the first one and the second one is kind of how you format it. The first one's a no-go because you're, you're looking for an outcome. If you want to talk about the performance, that's a perfectly fine way of asking to have somebody else put it on an agenda. Okay, again, we've kind of talked about serial communications. So we'll kind of skip through that. Again, and we're going to get into, I'm not even sure simultaneity is even a word, but it sounds good. So again, the, having a meeting electronically doesn't have to be all at the same time. It can be kind of consecutive, consecutive communications if it circles back on itself. So email, Councilman Good was asking about this. Again, just like you can't do it verbally, you know, on the phone or, you know, face-to-face, you should, if you can't do it that way, don't do it in an email because it's really the same thing. And the bigger reason to not do it in an email, like I said before, that email is going to be retained forever. So there's a record of you, you know, proposing potentially, probably inadvertently, an open meeting law violation.
I'd like to
Sure.
expand on that a little bit. At a timeframe and history different than where we are today, emails that were sent back and forth were seized by the Attorney General's office. And it exposes every one of you as a council member personally on sharing information on email. You need to know that because it's a public record.
Well, and again, I would say this, that even if, you know, if somebody were to complain there's an open meeting law violation, and they were to complain to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General were to contact us, we would completely cooperate. Because even if there were some potential open meeting law violation, it was probably inadvertent, it was probably not intentional. And by doing this kind of training, that's what they're looking for. When was the last time you trained your counsel? When was the last time you trained your commissioners on open meeting law? And if they see that we do this fairly regularly, they'll probably say, hey, just don't do it again. Or, hey, maybe this person needs some more training. The league, obviously, I think Councilman Good and, and Councilwoman Shoal went to a league training, and part of it covered open meeting law. So that's the kind of stuff that they're going to look for.
Well, that's, that's good, that's good, John. But keep in mind that they also have the capacity to seize your private computers, seize your private emails because they have done that, and they've done it in the past. And you need to be very much aware of that.
Well, again, when it comes to email, I would strongly encourage that you just use the city, your city email, your, you know, your prescottaz.gov email if you're going to use, if you're going to, you know, for government business. You know, you've seen, you don't want private servers, you don't, you know, because whether it's an open meeting law, public records issue, or whether it's, you know, a lawsuit of some sort, there is ability to access your private, you know, your private email if you're using it for government business. You know, so you use your, you know, use your government email if you're going to use email. That's the easiest way to avoid any of those issues that Councilman Lamerson brought up. Again, use your government email, even if you use, if you access your email from your own computer at home, that's not a problem. It's still saved in our system, in our black box downstairs. And that's where we're going to get the record from. So if somebody makes a public records request of all emails by these two council people on this topic, we'll get that into our office with the clerk. We'll send it to IT and say, send us all the emails on this stuff. So it's not going to be, probably, you may not even, we'll make you aware, so-and-so is requesting this, but there's nothing you need to do because we're maintaining all that stuff separately from your logging in and logging out of your email. Okay. So again, emails, I mean, we talked about it quite a bit. Try, obviously, you don't want to have a meeting by email any more than you want to have a meeting in person if it's not properly agendized. And as, by the way, as an aside, you know, I believe, and I think the policy of the council, and we've done this before, obviously, that, that, because it's a separate, it's a, it's a city-by-city decision, we do allow for you to attend a meeting by phone if you can't make it in person. So that's just kind of a little aside. Eventually, maybe we'll do it by Skype, who knows? But, so, you know, you want to just be careful about having your discussions on items that either are on an agenda or likely to be discussed on an upcoming agenda. That's kind of the standard for, you know, what may violate open meeting law. Again, do it, and just can't emphasize enough, just do it in public, talk about it in public. Nothing, we have nothing to hide here. I think that's an important thing to say. So what's going to happen probably more often than not is you're going to get staff emails, going to, you know, about topics that are coming up. Or, you know, the discussion earlier, hey, can I, can I call the fire chief and ask him a question about some operational question? Or can I call Tom Geis about some land use issue? Certainly. And more often than not, you're probably going to email him. Or you're going to get a letter or an email from a constituent, this happened. And then you want information, you can email that to the appropriate staff person and say, hey, can you respond for me? Can you address this issue? And the staff person can send it back to you. Oftentimes, you know, you, I think it seems more frequent now that you all get the same email, you know, from the same, from a person who has an issue, complaint, question, you know. It's best if, you know, you just rely on, say, the city manager to say, hey, can you go get a response? Rather than send seven emails to, you know, Tom Geis or the fire chief. Let that, let that process work, get the response back. And then it can come back from, you know, either the mayor or the manager. Sometimes it comes from me, depending on the question, to respond to the question, you know, complaint, whatever. That's perfectly fine. Don't, you know, and again, this kind of goes without saying, don't use your staff people to circumvent open meeting law. Don't, don't tell them, hey, tell everybody else how I'm going to vote. It's kind of saying, you know, that's what violates open meeting law. But certainly, if there's information you want from staff about a particular item, I think our practice here is pretty good that if, if it's a, generally speaking, if it's an issue that's coming up and one council member has a question for staff, that it's usually shared with the rest of the council, so-and-so asks the question, here's the information that they were asking about. So you're going to get that information back and forth, and that's perfectly fine. If you have a question for staff, again, your call, whether you want to filter it through Michael or go directly to the department head, but don't CC all the other council members because that staff person's probably going to respond and give the information to everybody else that way. And that's, and that's a safer way of doing things because then it's just information that's being provided. When you get that information, then however, then don't have a debate. Don't, don't think, well, I think this is a terrible idea, or this is a great idea. Because then all of a sudden, you're kind of now having that meeting discussion. Okay. Not going to spend a lot of time, be careful when you're on whatever social networking, you know. We all see what trouble Twitter can cause an elected official. So just, just be careful when you use that because it can, it's, it's, I will say this, that the law really hasn't caught up to technology in this issue, so it's hard to know. If you post something on Twitter, let's say, Mayor Pro Tem, or if, I'm going to vote for this item, and you put it on your Facebook account, the law really hasn't said, well, that's a violation of open meeting law because you're other, you have three other council members who are friends on Twitter or on Facebook, and therefore, you've told them how you're going to vote. I would be careful, I would just suggest being careful about that. But the law hasn't sort of absolutely said that's an open meeting law violation. The theory being, well, it's kind of open to the public too. So, I don't know. But just, again, the law isn't clear, just so be careful on it when you're using sort of social media. just so be careful on it when you're using sort of social media. You know, again, in the utmost caution, it could be an open meeting law violation, can't tell you it absolutely is, so just be cautious. Already talked about this, and this is what, you know, Councilman Lamerson was talking about, you can be sanctioned for violating, sanctioned for violating open meeting law. This is just some sort of meeting etiquette, open meeting law, using technology, having kind of side conversations. You may be talking about hunting, but the public doesn't know what's going on, so it just sort of appear, could appear to be, you're talking about something that's on the agenda that you don't want the public to know. So again, it's about, it's about being careful. If you have to take a text or a phone call, there's the door, you kind of, you know, if it's, if it's emergency, go outside and do that. Again, it's about, a lot of it's about just appearance, so it looks like, you know, you're not having some sort of separate conversation with somebody, you know, on each end of the dais. These are things, again, this is kind of what Michelle handles for y'all. If you're gonna be at a social event, or if she thinks, or if we think that there's gonna be a quorum, we always post that social agenda, particularly, most likely, really if it's in a public-type place, you know, the Republican Women's Luncheon, post those social agendas. When you're, when you're there, if there's a quorum, talk about something other than city business, simple as that. If you're gonna give a, and this usually primarily goes to the mayor, but other people, if you're gonna give a speech, or gonna talk about something, about, that's city business-related, and you think other council people will be there, that's okay. Make sure it gets agendized, and make sure that you have the topic agendized so that the public can attend. Because when we post a social agenda or social meeting agenda, that implies that the public's allowed to be there. So if, where I would discourage you to do that is, let's say, your daughter's getting married, and you want to invite the rest of the, or a quorum of the council to be there, I wouldn't put that on a social agenda, because otherwise, you're gonna have the whole public, they're eating your prime rib, right? So you want to be, you know, if it's a purely private event, you don't really have to do a social agenda. But again, don't, talk about something other, certainly more important things to talk about than city business if it's a purely private event. Media, talk to the media. Don't do it. Just kidding. Nothing limits you from talking to the media, even if you, and this is where it's kind of weird between social media and traditional media, is when you talk about social media, it could imply, it could, you know, imply an open meeting law violation. If you talk to the traditional media, I'm totally for this, and I'm gonna vote for it, and I'm gonna encourage my fellow council members to vote for it, too. That is absolutely allowed and permitted under open meeting law. So there's a little bit of a disconnect between social media and traditional media in terms of what you can do. Again, the law hasn't really caught up. Okay.
John, hold on a second. So if you're on the radio, you have a radio program, and you're talking about an item, and so is that public enough so that you can state a position?
Yeah, we would consider that traditional media. So, right, so I think this, there is sort of a difference between, let's say, your Twitter and Facebook and traditional media, is your Twitter and Facebook are kind of limited by followers and friends, unless it's some sort, you know, I'm not really sure how that would work, but if it's, you know, completely open, but I don't think social media necessarily works that way. But if you're on like a radio station or talking to the newspaper, it's completely open to the public. So that falls into this, it's allowed. And there's an attorney general opinion that says it's allowed. Obviously, you know, traditional media is, is the way to communicate to the public. I mean, back since the founding fathers, they had newspapers, that's how you communicated, right? You know, and Franklin Roosevelt, and now, you know, with television, so. But just remember these, the best one's the Abraham Lincoln quote. So, meeting, meeting sort of decorum, too. Public has the right to be at all public meetings unless it's an exec session, they can attend, they can listen, they can tape-record, they can even videotape. Now, I would say this, that, you know, if, if we don't necessarily allow somebody with a big giant camera to stand in front to block view, so, you know, if somebody's gonna do some sort of taping or videotaping, it has to not interfere with anybody else's ability to pay attention and follow, follow along. So unless it's a public hearing, or public hearing, which is, you know, mandated by statute, like a rezoning requires a public hearing, annexation requires a public hearing, there's no absolute right to have public comment, or to make public comment. Usually, that's determined by the mayor, or the mayor pro tem, whoever's running the meeting, to allow or not allow for public comment. So when in doubt, just do it in an open meeting, and we'll be fine. And then, of course, when in doubt, or if there's a question, call us before you do something because we'll help you through the issue. And the nice thing about that is, is if we're wrong, you're covered because you've relied on us to do something. And so that, that's certainly the best way to protect yourselves from any sort of questions about open meeting law issues. So any questions, we're gonna go into public records, and the rest of it's relatively brief. So open meeting, questions, comments, go. All right, public records. Presumption is that every document we maintain as a city is a public record. There's obviously exceptions to the rule. The, and the exception is right there. It's either confidential privileged, there's a privacy interest, or this is what's called a balancing test, that the, the interests of the state outweigh the public's right to know. And there's a whole series of cases, and we're not gonna get into it, that kind of tell you how to do that analysis. One of them, for instance, is if there's a pending investigation, criminal investigation by the police department, more than likely, we're not gonna release documents because it could interfere with the outcome of the investigation. So that's kind of one example of where you do that balancing test. And again, this is really just to make you aware of what, of our processes. We've got it, I think we've got a great public records request system now, it's all electronic. We, you know, because in the past, we would charge people twenty-five cents a page for copy. Now, we can do it where we can just email them the document, so there's no charge. We can't charge for research time for, for most public records. So I think we've got a really, you know, neat system we put in place recently with the clerk's office this last year for people to make public records requests. So again, you, you probably don't need to maintain any record because, for the most part, the agendas you get, the documents you get as part of the agenda, the staff materials you get are all gonna be maintained primarily by the clerk's office or from the department from which you get the, the document. So, you know, if you get it in paper, you can probably go put it in the recycling bin. If you get it electronically, you can probably delete it off your system. If you have a question, ask. But for the most part, it's gonna be maintained in, usually by the clerk or by the department that, that, you know, created the document. So what you get, I would tell you, more likely than not, you probably don't need to maintain it. If you have a question, certainly ask before you, you delete it. Okay? One, one other thing, last but not least on public records, and this is sort of goes with, with executive sessions, is we, we can't call something privileged or confidential. We can't go to executive session because the topic might be embarrassing or uncomfortable. That, that is not a basis for having an exec session or deeming a document confidential. So, for instance, kind of circling back to, if there's a sexual harassment investigation, once that investigation's complete, that investigation document's gonna be public. Even though it may be embarrassing as hell to the city, it's a public document. So, you know, trying to tie this all together. Okay, conflicts of interest, any questions on public records? Because I'm wrapping it up here. Okay, conflicts of interest. You cannot have a business or money interest in decisions you vote on. Simple as that. That, that amounts to a conflict of interest. There's nothing wrong with having a conflict of interest because, you know, sometimes you may have an interest in something that where you or your family members may benefit. That in and of itself is not a legal problem. It's when you fail to disclose it and you vote on it, that's what creates the problem. Okay. So it applies to all public officers, including appointees, boards and commission members, and it applies to all public employees. If you have what's called a substantialist interest in a decision...
Could you reiterate that? Because I want my fellow council to hear that one loud and clear.
Conflicts of interest law.
It's not just us. It's our appointees, our commissioners, it's everything.
If you have this, a substantial interest in a decision, contract sale, purchase, service, any kind of decision that may benefit you, or benefit a family member, you have to recuse, you have to disclose that conflict, recuse yourself from the discussion. The, the simple answer here is, if you think you might have a conflict of interest, you come to the legal department, we give you an opinion. Sometimes, if it's enough advance notice, we'll give you a written opinion, which is a public record, and you're entitled to rely on that opinion completely. However, you have to tell us all the pertinent facts. If you leave something out that's material to the decision, and we give you advice, it's just, no, you don't have a conflict, but you forgot to mention something, then that's, so make sure you tell us everything, and we'll give you the best answer. And usually, again, we're fairly cautious, we are on the side of caution on these kinds of things. So what's a substantial interest? Pecuniary, money, proprietary business. If you have one of those, then, then you may have a conflict if it's substantial. Now, let's say you're gonna vote on, and I'll get to this, so the questions you would ask yourself, does this decision have a positive and a negative impact on my interests out of my relatives? Do I have money or ownership interest? Is it, is it greater than a remote interest? And the best example is, let's say you're gonna vote on a cell tower that AT&amp;T or T-Mobile wants to put up, and you either own stock in T-Mobile or AT&amp;T, or your phone service is T-Mobile or AT&amp;T. That cell tower may benefit you, but it's not a conflict because you and a thousand million other people would benefit. So that would be considered a pecuniary, or a, a, a remote interest. Those are the kinds of things that kind of you have to, we have to dig for. So if you have those concerns, again, simple answer is ask the question, we'll give you the answer. These are kind of examples of remote interest. Most of these don't apply, again, ownership of less than 3% of the corporation, an officer of a, you know, a nonprofit corporation. You know, pretty straightforward. You know, for instance, I'll pick on the mayor here. Let's say the city was gonna do a contract with the school district. From our perspective, you would not be, because the school district is non-paying position, you wouldn't be conflicted out of making that decision, or voting on that, that item, because you're not benefiting in any way. Obviously, your school board lawyer may say, well, you're, you get compensated by the city, so we think you have a conflict. You know, it's one of those kind of gray areas. We would probably try and work it out. And there's always the appearance of impropriety issue. So when all else fails, and it looks, it may not be real clear, we'll always ask, well, what's this gonna look like? Does it, does it have a potential to appear improper? It's not a really a legal conclusion, but it's, again, it goes back to that faith and confidence of the government that the public has in doing the right thing and making right decisions where you don't benefit from it. So again, this is not, clearly not intended to really make, certainly not tend to make you an expert in this, just to kind of make you aware, you sometimes come up, ask the question, and we'll give you the answer.
Hey, John, I think Mayor Protem has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think a great example was, we voted on something that involved Prescott Lakes, I remember. And, and I remember going to you and asking specifically, since I live there, you know, should I abstain from that vote? And I remember the details, but it was pretty substantial, but I lived there with thousands of other people. So you said no.
Yeah, now, again, and, and these are very, these decisions are very fact, or these analyses are very fact-intensive. Let's say somebody was gonna do a rezoning in Prescott Lakes that was gonna affect you, affect your property values, but it affected you and ten, twenty, forty, sixty other people, probably isn't a conflict of interest. Let's say it's right next door to you. That's a little bit of a different analysis, right? So that's, that, these are, again, very fact-intensive questions that we would look at. So that's why when you, if you're gonna ask us the question, please disclose everything so that we can really give you an honest answer. Because at the end of the day, you know, one, voting on one item is, is less important than you maintaining your reputation and, and again, the city, the decisions of the city being, you know, the public having full faith and confidence that these are done for legitimate reasons and not because you're benefiting one way or the other. All right. Obviously, this goes without saying, don't take gifts or bribes. We do have a gift policy for employees. I don't believe it actually applies to council members in terms of the dollar limit. However, you know, there are state laws out there, particularly when it comes to, you know, sporting events. For some reason, down in the valley, sporting events are, are a big way to make friends with elected officials. We don't really have that up here, other than maybe the Northern Arizona Suns, but that's a $10 ticket, so. But again, if somebody, let's say, somebody wants to take you to a Cardinals game, well, that's probably not worth much either. Let's say somebody wants to take you to a baseball game or something. You know, the simple answer is, is let me buy the ticket. What's the face value? You know, I mean, it's a $35, it's a $50 ticket. If somebody, and I would give you firsthand experience, when we had the Super Bowl in Glendale, and I was, you know, down there, those tickets are, you know, the face value is 200 bucks, the real value's like 10, you know, $10,000 or something. So it gets, you know, that's probably not as big of an issue here, but those are, again, things, ask the question. If you get gifts, or offered gifts, again, the best way is just to say, hey, thanks, but no thanks. This time of year, oftentimes, you know, there'll be gifts brought in to the office or to, you know, city council. If you get those kinds of gifts, just share them with the office. That way, you avoid kind of a personal benefit. The exception to that is if you get liquor as a gift, then you just come to the legal department. All right. If you aren't sure, again, this goes back to just ask the question, and we'll give you the best answer we can. And if you notice that all of our city contracts have this voidable statute, that if somebody has an interest in a, in the contract and you fail to disclose, that years down the road, that contract can be voided. So that's why it's important to make sure that you're very open about it. Because again, it's more important to make sure that we're all above board, rather than making one, you know, voting on one particular item. These are, again, the worst-case scenarios. Very, happens rarely. Most often, you know, it's, again, it's inadvertent, accidental, and, you know, we'll, we'll deal with it. But if it comes up, ask the question. So that ends the presentation, unless you have any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Thank you, John, appreciate it. Anything else, Michael, that you're aware of?
Yes, sir, I think we're good.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. See you at 3 o'clock.